Bontrager, hunting. Pivilio.
Here.
Walkley.
Yes.
Alt.
Here.
Nichols. Here. Well, before we continue any farther, we lost one of our members, what, a week and a half ago?
It would have been November 2nd, Friday, November 2nd.
I think it's appropriate that we give a moment of silence for him. Okay. Do you have an approval of the agenda for the night?
I'll make the motion we approve.
You got seconds?
Second.
Leo, you're blocked out, but you are the one that seconded it, correct?
The voice from...
Yeah, the voice from behind, okay. Alt.
Yes.
Genzic.
Yes.
Pivilio.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Walkley.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Next thing is approval of minutes. We got any deletion, corrections, additions, did not need a motion? We just did.
I move we approve the minute.
We did the agenda first.
We just did the agenda.
We just did agenda.
Carl, you made a motion.
We approve the minutes as presented. I second.
Okay, very good. Alt.
Yes.
Genzic.
Yes.
Pivilio.
Yes.
Walkley.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Okay, Mike, you're...
It's mine for the moment. What we have is a variance application. Kurt and Cheryl Bernmeister, and they are here. They own the home at 708 Holly Road. They wish to do additions to this home, actually in three different areas of the structure. But this one here, they wish to expand the home an additional four feet on the east side, requiring a side yard variance. And the additions that they have planned, the east side is right here. Let me turn this. Oops. The east side is right here. So they've got an addition planned in the back, both on the, it would be the northeast and the northwest corner. And they've got an addition planned here going into the Holly roadside, and then this here on the lakeside. Quickly, and it's on this, this addition here in the back corner, no issues. They've got plenty of room on the side yard. And they've got plenty of room, both to the north, to the lake, and also to the south Holly Road. And I didn't get a tape measure out, but I have a stick measure with the GIS, and basically from the seawall area here to the back of the house, not the current patio, but the back of the house, it's just over 100 foot. So they've got a lot, a lot of room back there. But the variance application only has to do with this side yard variance, really nothing else other than that application. And the home currently, after the surveys were done, the home currently in this area here is nine feet, five inches from the property line, and a little farther out, it's nine feet, seven inches from the property line. So it is just inside a 10-foot at this moment. Back to this. This shows a picture, actually, I took this from the road, and it shows the Bernmeister house on the left and the Blackburn house on the right. And the Bernmeister house, as I said, it's, in the one area, it's nine feet, seven inches, and another area, nine feet, five inches from the property line. The back of the house where they also want to do an addition, this is what the back looks like, from their backyard, looking at the patio and that corner of the home. As I'd mentioned, the additions they want to do, you know, they've got plenty of room to expand lakeside, Holly roadside, with no issues there. And the addition I pointed out on that northwest corner, they can do that, and, you know, that's a simple site plan approval, no variance is required there either. And that is that area where that northwest corner, as I pointed, that they have plenty of room to do the addition they wish. And that's from the street side. This property is Zoned R1, one-family residential. The lot is 100 foot wide, it's 217 feet deep, which is 21,700 square foot. It's conforming. It's conforming, it's a big lot. The minimum lot size for an R1 is 12,500 square feet, so this one at 21,000, it's a, they've got a big lot. They've got a big lot. But the side yard setback calls for a maximum 25 feet, and it's 25 feet combined. So your minimum setback cannot be, should not be, less than 10-foot. So you could have 10-foot and 15 on another, or 12 and 13. There's various combinations, but the minimum required is 10 feet, and they're at that now. And again, there are no issues with the setbacks to the north, which is the lakeside, or to the south, which is, or the north, which is, yeah, north, which is lakeside, or south, towards Holly Road. There is one very unique feature that I found, and I think some of you are aware of, is this property has a curb cut. And it's on the east side, and it shows on the site plan. And what makes this very unique and odd is that the actual curb cut part of it is located on the Blackburn property. So I got ahold of the, basically, Register of Deeds, and I had them read some information from the easement. And back of June of 1969, the owners of these two properties, they made an easement agreement to allow for this Circle Drive to have curb cuts on two different lots. The Blackburns bought their home, Sharon, Dr. Blackburn, she bought the home in 1988, I believe it is, and the Bernmeisters bought theirs in 2003. So that's just a very unique thing about that site. And this shows the curb cut to the right, and it shows, this is, I'm sure it's a survey stake out by the driveway, and then, of course, it runs down near the house in here. One feature that I'm going to point out, there is a drain kind of in this area here. It does not, for example, hook up to the storm drains, but there is a drain there, and I have to assume that has to do just for stormwater runoff, yard, you know, just to get water moving down into that. I'm going to now get into the standards that are in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which we have to review every time we look at a variance application. And it starts with "to authorize upon an appeal a variance from the strict application of the provisions of the chapter whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or area of a specific piece of property at the time of enactment of this chapter, or by reason of exceptional conditions of such property, the strict application of the regulations enacted would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties; two, or exceptional undue hardship upon the owner of the property, provided such relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of this chapter." This is, this is the big question here, you know, that, in my opinion, is the size and the shape, it is a conforming lot. So, you know, is there an exceptional condition or hardship? That's, to me, is the big question. Also in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and this is under Section 4669, Part 4, the Cadillac City Code states that "in consideration of a variance, the zoning board of appeals shall first determine that the proposed variance will not result in conditions which..." And these five conditions, Cheryl and Kurt and Sharon, these are basically explicitly from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. This is a Michigan act that is in our ordinance. And the first condition is "it cannot impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property." The findings are staff comments, staff findings. You know, I don't think there's going to be an impact on lighter air to adjacent property. The only thing is, any time you do construction, side yards, you know, it does change the view of the lake from Holly Road, you know, but that's only for people that don't own property on the lake. Another standard, "it cannot unreasonably increase congestion in public streets." The finding is, this is not going to affect traffic volumes at all. You know, it's a single-family home, and it'll continue to be used as a single-family home. The third standard is "it should not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety." Staff finding, as requested variance, will not increase the danger of fire or endanger the public safety. Any construction has to meet the Michigan Building Code, any occupancy, the fire marshal has to inspect it before they get an occupancy permit, and they're also very fortunate, and they have a fire hydrant directly in front of their house across the street. So they've got, there is no danger of fire or to the public safety. Whoops. The fourth standard is "it cannot unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area." The finding is, this type of side yard variance encroachment, it may or may not affect established neighboring property values. To continue this, we do know that in some neighborhoods, non-conforming side yard setbacks, they do change the look of the neighborhood, and, you know, we've got some neighborhoods, not this one in R1, where, boy, there sure are some homes and some structures close to the property line, and it does, it looks, it can make things look a little congested. The fifth standard is "in any other respect impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, welfare of the inhabitants of the city." The staff finding is, this variance request, it's not going to impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants, the residents of Cadillac. Lastly, a couple staff comments. One thing I looked at when I looked at the architect drawings is, the variance they're asking for is to allow for construction of additional four feet to the east. And so with the home being nine foot, five inches, and 1.9 feet, seven inches, you know, that's going to drop the, that's going to create a setback just of the building of just inside of six feet from the property line. And looking at the architectural drawings, and I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but my suspicion is, soffits, particularly in this area here, will be added on, they typically are. And I've seen enough architecture drawings that when they do this, they do not include the soffits. And any more standard soffits, you know, two-foot. So you potentially have got another two-foot also encroaching towards the setback.
Mike, just to disclose, we did not discuss the additional two-foot you raised, first time I...
Right, right.
...with the, so...
That's, yup, yup, nope, nope. And that's, but I wanted to point that out, because visually, it is something that you see, you know, you would see. But that's a question that I, that came up when I looked at this. The other potential issue, just, it's flat-out water drainage from rainstorms. There have been issues over the years with occasional flooding and lower levels of homes on Holly Road. I live on Vine Street, I'm up near the top of it, and I know homes right at the bottom of my street on Holly Road. They have had issues with, you know, flooding and, you know, the lower levels of the home. And I do know that particularly in the spring, I personally have seen storm drains, just due to ice or debris that gets in them, you'll see, you know, water backing up and moving places it shouldn't. But that's, that's one issue that I feel does come into play here. Mike, does that, the drain that's in the ground, does that drain into the lake? To my knowledge, no. To my knowledge, no. It appears to just go straight down. You know, it may have just a lot of gravel and sand in the bottom, but it definitely does not tie in with the storm drains in the street. That would be pretty much impossible, because it would have to flow uphill. Because all of these lots, when you look at the elevation and the slope, they clearly slope from the south Holly Road, or from Vine and Ren and Heather, you know, down towards the lake. And, you know, when it rains, you can, you can see it. So that, that, to me, you know, is a potential issue that, you know, could affect the Bernmeisters' home, could affect the Blackburns' home. I don't know. You know, I don't know. That's a question. That's a, that's a question that I think does need consideration and needs to be looked at. Lastly here, the public notice required, again, in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, we put out public notices more than 15 days prior to the hearing. One was in the Cadillac News. Then we also are required to mail them to everybody that owns property within 300 feet. Received a very short letter from a neighbor across the street, they have no issues with it. When the public notice was sent out, the Blackburns contacted me, and I gave them a copy of the staff report that you folks received. And Sharon prepared a letter that I emailed to you folks yesterday, and I put it here. Kurt and Cheryl, you're welcome to a copy of it. But they, they kind of address, they definitely address the potential drainage issues with this. Lastly, based on finding of compliance or non-compliance with the standards of the ordinance in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application. And that is all I have for the moment. I also wanted to include, I forgot to do this, this, I put this in your packets, this was a GIS overhead, and as I pointed out, Ren is here, but it's actually a fire hydrant right here, which is great for them. But I have a layer I can click on, and it shows what, what they call the FEMA flood zone, areas that could potentially have flooding. And, and you can see, it's, it's not a surprise, that area of Holly Road, and you have the same thing on Sunset Lane, across the lane. Shoreline properties do, you know, they're, they're lower. They're lower to the water table, they're lower to, the shoreline in particular, springtime is potential for some things possibly getting over the seawalls, and if nothing else, the ground is saturated. That's it for what I have to say. Any questions you have for me, please bring them up. Any questions you have for the Bernmeisters? And any questions you have for me at the moment, or other comments?
Do we know approximately, I see the ground drain on this picture. Do we know how, how close that's actually going to be to the addition?
I would estimate 6, 8, 10 feet. And that's the wall, not the, not the soffits.
Any more questions? Okay, hearing part's closed, and I'll, I'll be commenting. Anybody, you got to come and step up the microphone and state your name and address.
You don't have to. You don't have to, or you can if you wish?
You do.
I will, because Kurt Bernmeister, 708 Holly. The water issue, I think, is one we want to be concerned about for sure. One of the reasons we want to do the addition the way we're doing it, or move the garage to this side, is in our last 100-year high-water mark a few years ago, we had water from the city sewer, became overwhelmed with the, with the rain, and we had a real heavy rain. And it came down our driveway and entered the house from under the garage, because the garage entry is actually on the lowest level of the house on, on the far side, not the Blackburn side, but the opposite side of the Rommel side. So we got to fix that. That's one of the things we have to fix. So there, there is this 100-year water history that we need to be concerned about. I'm as concerned, I didn't think of it, Sharon brought up the drain when we were talking about it. I'm as concerned about the drain, I think, as they are, because we're going to be doing that lower level as living space, so we're investing a fair amount of money in that lower level. And I know they have already done that on their house. So we don't want water in either direction. So I want to express that we're concerned about it. We've raised it to the architect, and if there are things we need to do in the process to address that, or prior to initiating anything to address that, we're in, because...
So I'm assuming for the house, the roof runoff, you're going to have gutters, and that's all going to be directed...
Yes.
...away from the properties. So do you currently have water that runs in the yard?
Not under, no, frankly, no. The only time we've actually had it that it was an issue was, gosh, how many years ago was it? Nine, 10?
Water, okay.
Five or 10 years ago, when we had that last bad, bad storm. We do get a puddle occasionally from the pile of winter snow, depending how bad winter is, but that finds its way to the lake okay. Our problems that we've experienced have been on the opposite side of the house, but that drain probably has a lot to do with solving those problems on the other side. They may, you know, they may have existed over there until that happened. So we're going to have to try to make sure we take care of sloping things properly to feed that. The, the additions are going to be on either side of that, in front of or behind, but it will change the slope a little bit, so we have to be conscious of it. So I just, that pretty much covers what I wanted to add, but I wanted to add both of those issues. So I think everything's out on the table relative to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't like doing these things. Cheryl Blackburn, next door, 704 Holly Road. And we're just concerned about the fact that the lot apparently is just barely non-conforming now, and to extend it additional four feet is going to make it more out of the non-conforming zoning, I believe. And because of all the water issues that we had faced throughout the years, you know, we purchased the property in 1988, we were told there's absolutely no problem with water in the basement, because we do have a full finished basement. And it was a very dry year, and we had water in the basement. So we've taken a lot of measures and gone to a lot of expense, and I referenced this in the letter, to do the indoor tiling and divert the water away. And we do see a fair amount of significant moisture buildup on that side, on that west side of our property.
Even though you guys have the burn that goes up, you still see...
We do, yeah, but in that, in that valley part between the two homes, there's, there's quite a bit of moisture that's, that's there at the, at the more significant wet times of the year.
That's a pretty good distance from, from your foundation, isn't it?
It is, but I don't, I'm not an engineer, and I can't tell you how the water is getting in or not, but since we pretty much indoor tiled the entire perimeter of the house, we have not had any issues. And we have, what are the things called, off of the, off the soffit and fascia?
Gutters.
Gutters, thank you, thank you. We have the gutters, you know, so we've taken a lot of measures to try and do that. We installed a deluxe backup sub-pump, and also have an automatic generator too, so we were not affected in the 2008 storm that we had, when there was power loss, because we had the backup generator to be able to keep the electricity in that sub-pump moving. It's our understanding, from speaking with various legal individuals, that if it's non-conforming now, we, you know, there shouldn't be an exception made for it to be additionally non-conforming in granting this variance request. So we would prefer, if there's a Plan B that's available for our neighbors, which we like, to go with, we would, we would prefer a Plan B as opposed, as opposed to this Plan A.
Mike, I've got a question for you. She's referring to almost non-conforming. Didn't we say that the lots were conforming already?
The lots are.
Okay.
But the home, and where it's set...
Okay.
...is non-conforming in that it is just inside 10-foot... ...of the property line. Got you. So this wall here is non-conforming. It's just barely by inches inside of 10 feet. And I think the only way they, everybody found that out was by actually getting a survey, which was great. But the other side of the home here, which I'm going to get to, this side here, again, I just use that stick measurement that I have, but they've got about 30 feet between the side of the home here and the property line over there.
Is the wall on the left, is that the property line?
No, it's, it's close to it. It's close to it.
It's actually, I think, other side, very, very close.
Just, yeah, it's close to it. And, and this stick measurement I do, I mean, it's pretty accurate, but it's an estimate. I mean, it's an old GIS. You know, you've been always seeing the GIS as I give you, they're distorted, because you'll see shadows, you know, which means, you know, it's probably not taken directly, directly overhead, it's at an angle, so... But, yeah, they've got a lot of room on that side.
Okay. Well, is there... I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Is there a reason why you want to extend it four-foot over, why not just make it a straight wall all the way down?
Well, we started that way.
Yeah.
We started that way, and the architect's recommendation, that'll be the garage in front, a garage laundry room onto the kitchen. The kitchen's on this side, front of the house. And the walk-around space on the, well, it's pretty limited, and it was their recommendation that we should go a little larger, so you could get around the vehicles in the garage. That was the only reason. So we, we went and extended a straight line when we did it.
Keep the garage the same way, just move it more to the left, to the west?
I'll step over here.
Yes.
The reason that that becomes prohibitive is we're trying to keep, there's four columns here. We want to bring those columns across from an appearance standpoint, to extend that kind of porch look. And you have to make that turn right within this area in order to get everything to fit at this side. We're, we're not constrained property-wise, ground-wise over here, but we're stuck with the house we got.
Okay.
And that's how we got to where we got.
Okay.
So my question gets to the practical difficulty. As I look at this piece of property, it's, it's nice rectangular, there, there aren't any sink holes in it or exceptional features. How do you see a practical difficulty here that would be enough to cause us to say that the zoning doesn't apply to you in this case?
Well, to lay my cards on the table, this is about our fifth or sixth serious iteration of this thing, because we've been dealing with, or trying to deal with, those kind of issues, and issues we didn't think about. So, and, and each one of the scenarios sometimes came up with another issue. So we have gone through the, the process here, and we really believe that this is the least risky approach to anything we've come up with, the most aesthetic approach that we've been able to come up with, in order to how to keep the elevations on both sides playing together and making sense, and still giving us a floor plan, et cetera, that means our lifestyle. So we didn't kind of, this isn't our first iteration, and wasn't arrived at haphazardly. I really don't see any major issues of any kind. I would, I actually think this might be solving some, with the one gray area being this drain on this side, and just exactly how it's... I don't know if I answered your question there, but...
When we talk about a practical difficulty, it's a practical difficulty with the, the project, excuse me, with the property itself, not necessarily with the project. So, I, I guess I'm struggling trying to find a practical difficulty here.
Okay. Okay. Any more comments? Then I guess it's time to either ask for motion or discussion. Approve or disapprove, so.
In terms of discussion, I have a, a hard time with this one without a practical difficulty and that's, that's basic to the, to what we're doing. The, the other review standards happen after we have a, some exceptional thing happening with the property.
Yeah, I have a hard time just with, that the flooding issue isn't 100% addressed, so our decision can affect the Blackburns that if we okay this, we're putting, we may be potentially putting flooding on their property and that's my biggest concern.
I don't think that's, I mean, if you go out and look at the property...
I mean, unless you can...
Like I said, I think it's gonna do the opposite. It may... Because how does, how does the roof slope currently?
Is it planned to addition?
No, currently, on this, on the, what is this, east side?
Mike, you might flip back a picture or two there, we can, I think they could see the roof line.
It's north, well, it's actually north, south. East, west is peak.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Currently, it's sloping toward Holly Road and toward the lake. This addition, as proposed, would come this direction and the addition would slope in each of these directions, both front and rear.
So, there'd be extra, extra water going?
Yeah, but it's all gonna be controlled with...
Gutters, yes.
A gutter and a downspout and all that taking it away, but you're just gonna...
There's only one way where you can dump the water from the gutter is between the two houses.
No, you can, you can direct the tile out, out in the yard or wherever. That shouldn't be there. We could put that in a stipulation that they have a in-ground, small tank of some sort that there's tiles run into.
I still, can I make comment or not?
Yes.
Come up to the microphone.
Should stand up, yeah, should stand up.
Oh, thanks.
The lot is still, I'm gonna go back to that, non-conforming, even though it's by inches. And to ask for an additional four feet on our, you know, to our property is gonna make it even in more non-conformance, if that's a word. So, I, I, you know, I don't want to get into a lot of detail and I, and I, and I'm, I'm pleased that there's some problem solving with this, but I, I think the lot, you, you need to look at how the lot stands now and what it's going to be if you grant this request. I do have some legal material here that I was provided with. I don't want to, you know, impose any of that on, but it pretty much says the same thing.
Yeah, I kind of like what you're doing. I think it would help the water problem, to tell you the truth, but I, I don't like that it's, that we're going over that four foot. I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't agree with that part.
Mike, excuse me, just...
Yes.
Since the initial request was, was it fi...
Four foot.
Four foot.
Yep.
So, how does that play legally with the soffits? If those are, if those aren't in this request?
Legally, it's a hard one for me to say, other than I think it's important. When you have a conforming si, when you have a building that is conforming on the lot as far as all the setbacks go,
Mm-hmm.
there is a thing in the ordinance that relates to, like, soffits and that sort of thing. And it allows for so many inches of soffit based on so much distance away from property lines, front, rear, north, south.
So, that doesn't have to be requested in the variance for the soffit? It's just sort of a...
It should be, but it doesn't have to be. Architects rarely on their drawings include soffits. You're looking at building walls. I think as a rule, to defer to past decisions when people have asked for variances, we certainly have, you know, considered it. But the ordinance does, if something is set on a lot and it is conforming in every way, then feasibly, based on how far it is off of the neighboring properties, et cetera, you're allowed so many inches for soffits. Soffits nowadays are standard two-foot. If this house then is six-foot off the property line, you know, how much of a soffit would you allow? It's just, it should be considered. My opinion is it definitely should be considered as part of a setback when you're dealing with a non-conforming setback.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we deny the variance based on lack of practical difficulty.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second then.
Okay. Mike?
Pevilio.
Yes.
Knight.
No.
Alt.
Yes.
Walkley.
Yes.
Gensick.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
The motion passes that the variance is, the variance request is turned down and the reason is lack of practical difficulty based on the ordinance and the zoning enabling act.
How many feet would you lose in your garage if you made it flush to the current house?
It would be, well, I answered that quickly. It would be four. Open height of, we need to discuss the soffit.
So, is it, no, I mean, it's, it's over and it's been decided, but I'm just trying to think. Could you redesign the garage to be, it, it still make it usable?
We might do that. That's a good option.
What we do is we lose the, we lose the possibility of doing any kind of screen in built-in path. It's not feasible because of the windows that are situated, so that there's no security. So, it's basically no screen.
A question, probably doesn't matter now because we're sort of at the noiseboard here, but we were going to remove the driveway and move it back over, even though that wasn't on our property, on the house. So, the process, if we do that, what ramifications are there impacting this process? I assume Kurt is going to move it in place. Is that a...
I have to ask, Mike, I'm assuming it's probably grandfathered in now.
Your, the easement is legally, it's registered, the registered deeds, easement agreement from 1969. If you were to want to move it and have it entirely on your property, what you would first want to do is, it's a simple application, apply for a curb cut. And then the drawing would show where you would want it to be. It would be reviewed by the city engineer and you go from there. There was a brand-new house built on Holly Road that was completed just this summer. That is a 100-foot wide lot and they fit a circle drive in there with two curb cuts. So, it can be done. It can be done. And there's a part of me, when I looked at that easement, Sharon, I don't know if you know, when your house was actually built, but I'm...
It was 1965.
But I was, I was kind of wondering if maybe this easement agreement was made even before your home was built. I don't know.
There's only been two owners. We were the second Jack and Florrie Corn, we're the first.
Okay.
And, and the house is, the house is really well-built. I don't know if anyone remembers Jack Corn, but I believe he had polio. And so, the house was actually, back in the 60s, handicap accessible, you know, built excessively. So, we have, you know, very little barriers there. And I think it was the only, I think it was the only sec, the only, the second house that was on the road. I think it, I think those two houses were, like, consumer maybe? That's what I've heard.
Consumer, consumer, they liked housed on by Four Winds. The second one. It's all electric, just prove it, it was, you know, an electric house. I don't know which one it is down there, but that was the second one.
We were, you know, there weren't that many homes
No.
or, or structures on Holly Road.
Like size. Had fun swimming down there until you guys start building houses, we couldn't use it anymore.
May I make a final comment?
Yeah.
First, I, I want to apologize to all of you for taking time tonight. I had thought we had covered our bases and, and had at least a kind of an agreement and concept that we were okay or we wouldn't have gone this far. So, your time is valuable. Sorry we took your time that ended in a, a no-show, if you will. But we, we appreciate your efforts and, Mike, you as well.
Well, not a problem.
Keep working at it.
I just, with reference to that, I just want to mention that, of course, when the plan was brought to myself and John Wallace, we did turn it down as is. And I certainly, as I tell everybody that we say no to, that we, you know, you have an option. You, you don't just necessarily have to take Mike Coy's word. You can go before a panel of seven and present your case and quite frankly, I encourage people to do it.
And there's, there's still...
As I did them. I said, if you really want to do this, I encourage you to...
There's still one more step. You can go in front of the circuit court if you want to, if we, if we get it wrong.
I, I appreciate that, but if there's conflict, I don't want to go any further.
You're saying that, that's your next step if you wanted to do it, if you thought we did something wrong.
I'm confident you guys will figure out what to do.
I hope you come up with a Plan B. I think what you're doing is, is nice as far as the water and stuff. I think it'll help it, but...
But I'm afraid we're at the end of our group. This isn't our first cut, but I do appreciate it.
And I, I would like to say that this is not an imposition. This is something that, that we've all volunteered to do and we're more than happy to be here and...
Yeah. I've been here, pushing 30 years now, so...
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any more board member comments?
I have one I would like to make.
Yep.
With the passing of Cliff, we now have two positions. They would be the first, they would be the alternate positions for the zoning board of appeals. If you folks know someone who lives in the city and you think might be a good fit, is an alternate, who really asks questions. I think the big thing I appreciate about this group is that, you know, you do ask questions. I think it's important, because you guys think, you folks think of things sometimes that I don't. And, you know, as I'd mentioned to them, I personally told them that if this is something you want to do bad enough, don't just accept my no. You've got this group to go to and they will listen and they will, you know, give it some thought. So, if you happen to know someone that you think would potentially be a good member of this zoning board of appeals and start out as an alternate, as Troy did and as Carl did, please encourage them to get with me and fill out a application. That's it.
Okay. Anything else? We're done for the night.
Thank you for your time.
Mm-hmm.